The board is reconvened here in open session. We took no action during closed session. At this time, I'll introduce our pledge leaders. This is one of our fun traditions that we've had in the last several years. The deaf students from our schools come and lead the pledge. We have two leaders tonight. The first is Alyssa Vang, a seventh grader at Long Mill School. She said that so far, school is off to a great start. Her favorite class is her first hour science class with Mrs. Brett again. Excuse me. Alyssa says she likes science because they get to do experiments. As a science teacher myself, I agree. That's not in here. I editorialize that. This year, she's playing volleyball. Last year, she ran cross-country, which introduced her to running, which she enjoys doing in her free time. Outside of school, she likes to hang out with her friends and go to Mung events with her dad. And secondly, tonight, we have Emma Goodman from Longfellow. Emma is a great classroom leader who has done an excellent job at leading by example. She's respectful to all teachers and peers and has shown hard work throughout her time at Longfellow in the dual immersion program. Longfellow is incredibly lucky to have such a kind and compassionate fifth grader. Emma and Alyssa, thank you for being here. Emma will lead the pledge of allegiance in Spanish, and then they'll both lead in English. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its great culture, which stands one nation, without borders, in this world, with equal justice.
At this time, I would hear a motion to adopt the agenda for the evening. Thank you. Moved by Farrar, second by Bika. Motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the motion? None will call the question. Motion to approve the agenda for the evening. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed. Any abstention? We have a meeting. We start as we always do with our recognitions. And for that, I'll turn it over to Cefentin Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Nordine, board members, student representatives, and distinguished guests. We have three of them this evening. First is Deaf Awareness Month. September is Deaf Awareness Month, bringing visibility to and awareness of the communication needs and unique identity of deaf and hard-of-hearing people. In addition to our district serving hard-of-hearing students, we also offer American Sign Language classes for students wanting to learn the language and culture of the American deaf community. Here tonight is Heather Galloy, who teaches this class at both Memorial and North. She is joined by students who will share some signs with you. At this time... Okay, come on up, Heather.
Hello? So, we thought we would teach you how to sign Happy Deaf Awareness Week.
Thank you. Thank you.
At the very end, we'll have Ms. Galloy and her two students, please come up for some certificates. That's typically a big deal for us around here. Secondly, Hispanic Heritage Month. In recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, which starts today and goes until October 15th, we celebrate the many contributions, histories, and cultures of Hispanic and Latinx communities. In our district, we're especially grateful for the students and families who enrich our schools with their traditions, languages, and perspectives, making our community stronger and more connected. Today, we are joined from students across the district who represent their cultural heritage and the hundreds of Hispanic families that make our district such a diverse and vibrant place. We're proud to have representation from Zico, Venezuela, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Honduras, El Salvador, Puerto Rico, and Cuba. Thank you for sharing your heritage, your culture, and your stories with us. And finally, we have Memorial High School has a recognition. Memorial High School is proud to spotlight sophomore Will Tachek, whose extraordinary creativity and dedication to LEGO building have earned him national recognition and international opportunities. When Will was 13, he learned the Fox was casting for the first ever season of LEGO Masters Junior. He applied on a whim, got a call the same week, and went through a couple months of virtual interviews and timed challenges before being asked to become a contestant. When he found out he'd need a partner, he walked next door and asked his good friend Crosby Ellenfeld, "Do you want to build LEGO on TV with me?" The show recently aired on TV almost two years later, and Will and Crosby made it all the way to the finale. Though they didn't take home the ultimate title of LEGO Masters Junior Champions, they had a fantastic experience testing their creativity, storytelling, and building skills with each episode. As runners-up, Will and Crosby received the trip to LEGO headquarters in Billund, Denmark, where they were immersed in all things LEGO. On the final episode of the show, Will said, "It's always been a dream of mine to visit LEGO headquarters, and I can't believe I'm actually going to go there." Boone, who is, by the way, the runner-up in season one of LEGO Masters and now a designer for the LEGO group, didn't win either, and he's living my dreams, so maybe I'll end up like you. Congratulations to Will. Let's move over to the certificates. Usually don't have this big of a crowd.
I watched the ads.
Mr. Johnson doesn't bite too much, y'all.
Thank you.
Now move on to our public forum. Board policy provides 30 minutes in which community members who sign up in advance can speak to the board. The board has discussed nights like tonight where we have more people than can reasonably fit in 30 minutes, and we'd like to be able to hear everyone. My request to you will be to focus on what new you're adding when you come up to speak, so that we don't repeat and over again. That way, we can get through everybody and get to the actual business, which I'm sure you're also here to see tonight. So, welcome. Thank you for being here. As you come up, when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium here with the little green overhead projector, restate your name for the record, and then you'll have up to four minutes to speak. I will apologize in advance. I will cut you off after four minutes. There will be a timer on the screen for you to know how much time you have remaining. I'll also apologize in advance if I mispronounce your last or first name. As someone who's a Nordine that looks like Norden, I will try my best. Thank you for being here. The board does not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in our public forum. And due to Wisconsin Open Meeting Laws, the board does not respond to any public comment during that. So I don't want anyone to be surprised that we don't say something afterwards. So, thank you for being here tonight. I also want to recognize that we have quite a few people watching here in the building in our overflow room. We have 68 people, so your participation is noted by all of us. We are thankful that you're here in advocacy for this district. We just want you to know that we're aware that you're here, and that is on our minds as well. So thank you for being here tonight. Our first speaker tonight is Krista Blessing.
New to this, so hope I didn't do anything okay. My name is Krista Blessing. I am here representing the Flynn Elementary PTO. I am also here as a Flynn Elementary parent. I had a few things I would like to just say here today based on what this meeting is presenting later. So, the first thing I'd like to say is, me, I live... the first thing I'd like to say is, me, I live in the Eastside Hill. I have a first-grade son who just started at Flynn last year. Now in his first grade year. And we, as a neighborhood, love Flynn Elementary. We understand that there are some challenges facing our district as a whole with enrollment being down, probably going to continue being down. I am guilty, guilty. I'm a part of that. I have one child, and so I am a part of that demographic shift. I am well aware of that. I... So, we as a school community understand that this is going to be an issue facing us for a long time. We would like to be involved in the decision-making process for what this district does to solve that problem. We feel that our distinct point of view as a neighborhood school is extremely valuable. We feel that we can offer a lot of very creative ideas for how to better utilize the buildings that we have to suit the number of students that we have. As a group of families have already explored a number of options that we would love to be able to present to the board, to various committees, whoever is looking into this, so that we can be a part of that process. We are concerned about the idea of closing neighborhood schools. Flynn in particular. That school was built for Eastside Hill neighborhood when Boyd Elementary School closed. That school was built on property that was sacrificed by homeowners that live in that neighborhood. That school is built on Parks and Recreation property that was given by Parks and Recreation, Eau Claire, to build that school, because they knew that it was an important thing to have that school in that neighborhood. We would love to look at options for sharing that space. We share it with Parks and Recreation already. There is an agreement to share the field space and some space within the school with Parks and Recreation during the summers. And we would like to, you know, look at options to expand that sharing. We know that our enrollment is lower than our target, and we would like to look at creative ways to utilize that space while maintaining that school as a neighborhood school. We feel that neighborhood schools are extremely important to a neighborhood. Anecdotally speaking, I moved from a neighborhood very similar to Eastside Hill in Rochester. We joked that if we could just find our same house in Eau Claire, we would buy it, and we luckily did. We noticed right away that our neighborhood here was extremely different from our neighborhood in Rochester. We met our neighbors immediately. We knew people right away. We noticed that there were kids playing in our neighborhood. We had not seen that in our old neighborhood. I have met more people in the past few years. We moved in 2021. I've met more people in my neighborhood in the past few years than I did in 10 years living in Rochester. The only difference between those two neighborhoods is that one had a neighborhood school that closed, one did not. I think that that is an extremely important thing to pay attention to as we come through these decisions. So, as a school, as a community, we would really love to be a part of this. We would love to know how to reach out and be a part of any decision-making processes. I have four seconds left, so I will give it back. Thank you guys very much.
What's TN Hewitt?
Hi, my name is Diane Hewitt. Okay, everybody says it wrong. So, but I'm just here as a Flynn parent, basically. I have a son who is also in first grade, and Flynn is important to us for so many reasons, but I actually don't live right in the neighborhood. I live up on Main Street, so it's not the neighborhood aspect of it that's so important to us. It's the actual school, the teachers, the principal. I mean, it's a huge deal to us. We live three minutes away, so when my son, who has medical needs, he is in first grade and is very medically complex on oxygen and has lots of monitoring needs, and when he was in a pre-stroke situation, I was able to get there in three minutes, which is a huge deal. And there are other families at Flynn that have kiddos with special needs or whatever that need to be able to get to their kiddo fast. I have a high schooler who is at North, and then my son is in first grade, and my daughter is in 4K, and she will go to kindergarten next year and is super excited to be a Flynn flyer, not just because it's the school I went to or because of the neighborhood or whatever, but because the school actually means something as a neighborhood school. So, repurposing it is actually the same thing as closing it, because you're not going to use it for the same kids that are in that neighborhood that have special connections. And my son is actually able to not need as much assistance because of the hard work the Flynn staff has put into him. They love every student like they're their own. They take pride in taking care of them and giving them what they need, and I know that I can send him to school every day and not have to worry about whether or not somebody's going to notice, whether he's acting different and about to have a stroke, because they know him. And it takes a minute to get to know him, but if he was to move to a bigger school, more assistance, and they would not in the same way. And then that puts him at more risk for complications that he's not at Flynn, because it's a small neighborhood school that cares so much. So, it's just, I, just here as a parent, not wanting my child to lose their, like, second home. Like, it's a safe place for him and somewhere I can send him, knowing that they're going to take good care of him. Not every school is like that, and a small neighborhood school is more like a family is important. So, I just wanted to, you guys, to think about that when you're thinking about numbers and everything. Like, like Krista said, we are open to sharing the building. Just don't want to lose our family. So, I just would also like to help be a part of figuring out how we can make it work, maybe, and thinking of different ways that we can solve or at least help the issue of lower enrollment status without our kids losing their second home. I have 50 seconds left, but I don't have much else to say. So, I appreciate you guys for letting me talk and listening. Thank you.
Next is CJ Krueger.
Howdy, I'm CJ Krueger. I'm an East Hill resident and as of two weeks ago, a parent of a Flynn student, which is great. I'm also a lifelong advocate of the public school system, a deep believer in the importance of public standardized education. So, I want to thank everyone. I know you're all advocates. You all believe as deeply as I do in the public school system, and I want to thank you for listening to everyone here tonight, who I'm sure feels the same. So, when we bought our house in East Hill in 2020, we did so in part because of its proximity to Flynn, because my partner and I are both products of the public school system and both deep believers in neighborhood schools. We were greatly served with our education, and that experience is what instilled in us that advocacy. So, it's important to us that our children experience a public standardized education. Our oldest daughter started kindergarten two weeks ago. She came home the first day. She loves it, which is great. And then a week later, we got the notification that they were planning to repurpose Flynn. So, that was kind of a bummer. Neighborhood schools are more than just a place for education. They're anchor points for communities, and Flynn is an incredibly important anchor point for East Hill families. In fact, I think it's important to call out that a lot of people like me, neighborhood schools are the reason we believe in public education and the reason we send our kids to public schools. I imagine everyone in all the schools who might be impacted by these proposals probably feels the same way. Strong schools in strong communities produce advocates for public education, like me. I know I speak for a lot of families when I say that it's important to us that our children attend a school that is within the community that it serves. It might be the most important thing. So, I want to make the following fact plain. Should Flynn be closed or repurposed, there will be three schools within two blocks of my house that, because we believe so strongly in public education, our children are not allowed to attend. That's a bummer. So, for families who believe in the value of neighborhood schools, the specific value of neighborhood schools, it's frustrating to imagine a public resource like Flynn being handed over to serve students who come from families who don't believe the same. So, I'm accepting in faith these are proposals. Preliminary was in bold. I believe that. It's not a foregone conclusion, and so in the spirit of that, in the spirit of equity and community representation, I'd like to request that further meetings be scheduled with deep involvement from members of the communities that would be impacted by these closures and the repurposing. There's very real challenges laid out in the demographic report, but no doubt that we could all come together and think of some creative solutions that could serve the interests of all Eau Claire students and avoid stripping these important community anchors from the communities they were intended to serve. Thanks.
This is Amanda Brill.
Hello, everybody. My name is Amanda Brill. I live at 1907 Roy Street. I was born and raised in Eau Claire on the East Hill. I went to Immaculate Conception and Boyd Elementary. My parents and my friends' parents were part of that fight to have Flynn built, and I could not possibly let any of this pass by without speaking up, so I would not be able to look my children in the eye in the future and say, "I didn't try to stop this." So, that is why I am here. We are a proud Flynn family, and more importantly, we are a proud ECASD family. Whether we are Flynn, Roosevelt, Longfellow, the Limeridge Program, Triple Valley, Montessori, we are all part of the Eau Claire Area School District, and I would like to believe some of the sentiments that were echoed earlier are also shared by the rest of our district, that we do value our neighborhood schools. Full disclosure, I am a teaching and learning coordinator here at the district, spent a lot of time in this room, spent a lot of time talking about this, the EMLSS. So, in my job as a coordinator, I've learned that we never begin a meeting without grounding ourselves in EMLSS. We often have a few minutes of discussion about how the EMLSS should guide our work to ensure that we are doing the best work in interest of student learning to ensure equity for all students through access, opportunity, and success. Now, in my role as a parent, I hope I can continue counting on the EMLSS to drive future discussions and decision-making regarding the fate of our neighborhoods, our children, and our schools. So, on the topic of access, I have a question. Are we willing to reduce access to students and families who currently depend on walking, biking to school? I hope not. On the topic of supportive learning environment, are we willing to disrupt students' learning experiences and sense of belonging by sending them somewhere unfamiliar and far away? I hope not. Finally, on the topics of collaboration, family engagement, and community partnerships, are we willing to pull our heads and hearts together to build a positive culture that values our neighborhood schools while providing alternative learning opportunities, access, and success for all students? I hope so. I yield my time. Thank you.
What's up? It's Jessica Miller.
Evening. My name is Jessica Miller, and I'm here to speak in support of our neighborhood schools, not just as educational institutions, but as vital pillars of community life. First, I would like to acknowledge the reality we're facing. I understand the district is grappling with shifting demographics, tight budgets, and the need to make difficult decisions. These are significant challenges, and I appreciate the transparency and effort that's gone into this process. But I urge the board to think beyond closures and repurposing. Let's explore creative, community-driven solutions that preserve what makes our neighborhood strong. Neighborhood schools are irreplaceable. They foster deep, organic ties between families, educators, and neighbors. They're places where children walk and bike to school, where parents meet and support one another, and where the school itself becomes a hub of connection. These schools promote healthy daily habits and increased safety in neighborhoods with less bus and car traffic. They promote a sense of belonging that can't be replicated by centralized or specialized programs. When a neighborhood school is closed or repurposed, it's not just a logistical shift. It's a rupture. We lose the daily interactions that build trust and safety. We make education less accessible for families who rely on proximity and walkability. We weaken the social fabric that holds our communities together. And please consider equity. Neighborhood schools serve everyone. They reflect the diversity of the Eau Claire neighborhoods. Programs like Montessori, while valuable, are self-selecting. Families must apply, and that process often filters out those with fewer resources or less flexibility. Expanding these programs at the expense of inclusive neighborhood schools is simply not fair and risks deepening divides rather than bridging them. Balancing a budget shouldn't be done by threatening equity. So, why not take what works in those programs and integrate those strengths into our existing schools? Why not pilot innovative models within neighborhood schools rather than displacing them? Efficiency matters, but so does community. So does equity. Schools are woven into the daily lives of the people in Eau Claire, and the proposed changes would create deep and lasting tears in that fabric. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to the children of Eau Claire.
What's up? It's Walt Ostrender.
Thank you to the board. Thanks, everybody. I'm also nervous. And I'm also the product of the public school system. My dad taught in the public schools up in Hayward, Wisconsin, for decades, and he taught speech. So, this should go well. But anyway, I'll start with sharing personal anecdotes that are similar to what others have shared. We moved to the East Hill six years ago from the Twin Cities. Echo a sentiment earlier. Lived in an extremely dense neighborhood in the Twin Cities. When our son was born, we didn't know any of our neighbors. Nobody really talked. It was very isolating. And we don't just know all of our neighbors in the East Hill and got to know them right away. We know them well. We count on them, even though we don't have a lot in common sometimes, and our dogs bark at each other. It's a wonderful neighborhood to be a part of, and the minute that I saw a news announcement about Flynn, my heart sank. From worry, it wasn't just unraveling a thread. It was kind of tearing apart the whole sweater neighborhood. I think you can hear it getting a little shaky now, too, but in the tone of some of the speakers today, how high the stakes feel behind this decision. From an economic standpoint, I suppose I will just kind of echo what was said about why we want to be involved in future conversations. We don't feel that we're in debate at all about what the problems are that the district is facing. Have total buy-in, respect. What we think that we can offer from an analytical lens as we look to solve this problem is more of a sense of what the opportunity costs are associated with shifting things around in the schools. There are a number of different solutions that we've been passing around, but all of them involve partnering, especially with the Montessori program. Our son, William, started in Montessori curriculum. We were so excited for him to start at Flynn, and we feel like not only the outcomes that he's achieved and that the school achieves, but the attention that he got from his kindergarten teacher, Miss Passas, and his first-grade teacher, Miss Peak, we couldn't get anywhere else and are at least as good as what we could have expected from Montessori. I coach sports, by the way, at South and Memorial High School across country over there. I love the whole district. I just kind of love every school and every kid, and when I cheer at meets, I cheer for every team, which is kind of annoying, and I don't have much of a voice. I just ran over here from the meet at South Middle School today. But anyway, in the spirit of all of that, we just want to be partners, want to help in the conversation.
Thank you. What's up? It's Eric Loody.
This is Eric Loody. Thank you, Board Superintendent. My name is Eric Loody. I live at 4151 Parkwood Drive in Eau Claire. My family and I also moved to Eau Claire specifically for us to attend Dual Immersion Program at Longfellow. I wanted to talk today about Longfellow, how it's a positive uplifting environment for our kids, and how grateful we are for the teachers and staff there. But I think it may be just as important to talk about the city of Eau Claire. We love Eau Claire. It's a growing, thriving city. Nature is everywhere. The roads aren't congested. The schools aren't overcrowded. Its tax base is strong, and it's a young community that supports education. Just last year, we passed an $18 million referendum with 64% of us voting yes. That vote speaks to a passion in our community to protect both schools. So why, in this growing city, are we accepting a narrative of decline in our schools? Having excess capacity in our district may seem inefficient and wasteful today, but likely may feel prescient very soon. It's true that birth rates are declining, but if you zoom out for a moment, Eau Claire is the second fastest growing city in the state, surpassed only by Madison. And inbound migration to the Midwest will only accelerate as pressures like rising living costs drive people here seeking a better quality of life. Enrollment in our schools, we can expect, may rise in the future. In my view, a school district with the capacity to welcome the growth with open arms is an asset, not a burden. Keeping capacity now is an investment in our future. It ensures we're never caught flat-footed by growth. So I would encourage the board to work with us parents on ideas to keep all of our schools open, be that another referendum or other ideas that we can all support together. Shouldn't be closing schools in a growing city. Let's have the vision to keep our legacy of great public education strong. Thank you.
Next is Kelly Holiday.
Hi, thanks for hearing me today. My name is Kelly Holiday. I have a letter. I don't know how the rest of them get through it without just reading it. I stand in support of Longfellow Elementary, the unique and very privileged perspective of being both a parent and a previous employee of Longfellow. I've been an active member in the PTO for the past 14 years, and I'm currently employed at Prairie Ridge as a caseworker for Head Start families. My oldest child started at Longfellow in 2011. He's right over there. And I'm about to have the last of my four children graduate fifth grade there this year. I can tell you that this school is not just a school for the families that attend. It is a family. It is a school where the principal values her staff and remembers the kids' names. When I talk to some of my son's friends that have also attended Longfellow, somehow the staff there have been able to create such a strong environment. These grown-ups graduated, all moved out, and on their own kids still call themselves Longfellow Lions. That's something special that should be held sacred to this board. You all know about the division of wealth in this city and coming from an equity standpoint, something this district prides itself on. I cannot see how shutting down the only neighborhood school in this part of town is even a consideration. We're speaking about some very low-income families that may not have transportation to get to school events or be active in any participation whatsoever because changing borders, again, would make it impossible without reliable transportation. Many of these families come from our Head Start program, and I see as their caseworker the effect firsthand, the huge obstacles they are dealing with. Moving a safe place from this neighborhood would be devastating. The only close neighborhood park requires children to cross over train tracks to get to it. What message does it send to our children and their families about being valued or even considered in situations like this? I've seen the beautiful new gym at North and the gorgeous new football fields. I'm so thankful for the passing of the two recent referendums. I'm so glad we can all breathe a little easier now that those have passed. I cannot, however, even fathom how a gym and some football fields are more important to keeping Longfellow and other neighborhood schools intact. Our children are too important to put that above them. Like I said before, my children are almost grown out of Longfellow, but to know that there might not be more generations, learning the respect, kindness, and family values that Longfellow has planted in would be detrimental, not only to the neighborhood, but also to our city and the growing population, is reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Gearcheck.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gearcheck. Give me a second. Good evening. My name is Paul Gearcheck, and I'm the father of a fourth grader at Roosevelt Elementary and a proud Roosevelt Elementary PTA president. I'm here on behalf of my family, our community, and we're joined by the staff, students, and parents of Roosevelt. We stand here tonight, united with our friends at Longfellow and Flynn Elementary, and a shout-out to the people in the overflow room. We thank you for being transparent in this process, and we understand the issues the district is facing. Later this evening, the Demo and Trends Committee will present an update and recommendation. My message to you tonight is the same, is a simple message. It's the same message Roosevelt has delivered for 12 years. We ask that you reject the current proposal from the Demo and Trends Committee and look for alternative options that allow our school to operate as-is. We are left with a lot of questions that we will be listening for answers to in the following months. Include, once these schools are closed, how long will it be until the district asks for another referendum to build another multi-section elementary in addition to the two referendums we already have in flight? Why not redraw lines and bring more of the new housing that's being built off of Jeffers Road to Roosevelt versus busing them all the way to Sam Davie? I disrupt 200 or more children's learning environments and their deep relationships to expand capacity for Montessori when the program has never reached its 316C capacity in the last 10 years and declined this year. Why disrupt these staff's careers? What happens to them? Why expand and invest deeper into a charter curriculum instead of the state of Wisconsin's curriculum? This is equivalent to an apple farmer selling oranges against his own apples. We believe you should invest in what you believe in, and we believe in Roosevelt. In the coming days and weeks, we intend on demonstrating to the district just how invested we are in our school. Currently, you've seen how invested we are, having in these past few years put over $240,000 of donated dollars into Roosevelt, more coming in every day. We intend on showing the real-life experience of the value of a smaller, two-section school like Roosevelt brings to our students, families, and our communities. You're sitting on an asset. In this global, digital, online world that we're raising our kids in, parents want individualized learning, smaller class sizes, and a hometown feel. Kids want to go to school where they know people, they feel a part of something, and they can enjoy their young lives while learning. We have all that right here in Eau Claire, and you have it in Roosevelt. We're a proud community of Tigers, and our Tigers roar. Thank you for your time and consideration with respect to the Demo and Trends Committee, who is simply doing their job. We ask that you reject this proposal. We ask that you reject it so we can go back to planning our Walk-a-Thon and our school dance. Thank you very much.
This is Ben Holman.
Hello, Board, Student Reps, and Admin. I'm Ben, and I'm a parent at North High School and Roosevelt Elementary. I'm also a former community member on the Demo Trends Committee, and so I'm very familiar with the charter of that committee and the challenges that our district faces. I want to thank you for serving on the board, for working in our school district. You are constantly asked to do too much with not enough. I could speak at length about Roosevelt and how wonderful that community is, but if you forgive me, I am interested in numbers and what things are going to look like, so I dove into numbers and how this proposal might affect Roosevelt. So I review the recent public activity of the committee, and I want to underscore that the committee has not shared a boundary proposal that demonstrates that it's possible to absorb Roosevelt into neighboring elementary schools. If you're going to close a school, you have to redraw the boundary lines, and this is a difficult task to accomplish in Eau Claire. There are few available seats in Davie, Sherman, and Lake Shore. At 80% capacity targets, these schools combined only have 114 available seats, and we have 215 students at Roosevelt. That's 100 students more than we have space for at these neighboring schools. Sherman alone is an overflow school, and it only has three seats available at that 80% target. I'm skeptical that the committee can support their proposal to close or repurpose Roosevelt and absorb all 215 students with a reasonable boundary map. So it's a challenge of geography in our city. We're always fighting, the seats are not where the students are on the north side. If we had no concern for physical proximity, we would take 100 Roosevelt students and bus them to another school that is nowhere near their home. I don't think that we want our children to attend schools that are far from them. I think all the parents here, I think even the board here, you want your students to go to schools in your neighborhood. You want to walk, you want to bike, you want to go to the playground at your school. That's what we're giving up. So if you question these boundaries and the geography, you'll find that you have to stretch that concept of a neighboring school beyond its breaking point and simply say, "Eau Claire does not value neighborhood schools." In order to make this work, we must say, "We do not value neighborhood schools for all of our students." This leaves the district in a precarious spot. If you close Roosevelt, now you have Sherman, an overflow school, that only has a few seats available. You have significant development happening along the north crossing, near the Menards Distribution Center. And if we are pushing students into that to accommodate closing Roosevelt, we have lost our margin to absorb that development in that area of Eau Claire. I recommend that you leave Roosevelt open, which gives us the option to flex the Sherman boundaries to absorb some Sherman students into Roosevelt and absorb that development on that side of Eau Claire. And now, I know that you do not take this duty lightly. This is a serious matter to consider. Closing two schools and ending those communities cannot be undone. So I encourage you, as you proceed through the coming months, to be completely transparent about what we are giving by giving up these neighborhood schools. How much cost are we saving? Tonight, we know that three of our schools may close. We don't know which, we don't know how, we don't know when. We don't know what we get for them. We don't know if we're saving $1 million, $50 million, $10 million. We don't know effects to staff. We don't know many things. So in the coming weeks and months, please be transparent about what this community is receiving at such a high cost. Thank you.
This is Angela Jones.
Hi, I'm Angela Jones. I'm a parent of a child at Longfellow. And like many of the other families here, this evening, I'm here to address the board regarding the presentation this evening from Demo and Trends. In your letter, Superintendent Johnson, you said that you value public input, and you encouraged us to come out this evening, and we showed up. And I know that there are many families who couldn't. It's less than a week's notice, and it being 7:00 PM on a school night, I mean, this is the first time I am not at home since my child started school that I'm not at home at bedtime. But it's that important. My questions for you, as you move forward, echo many of the other parents who spoke tonight. I am curious to learn about the ways in which you will provide space for the communities that are directly affected by these proposals to have meaningful input and space that our families can access with appropriate notice and accommodations for families and our communities to participate. I am also curious as to what seat representatives from these communities have at the table to engage in problem-solving and finding solutions and making decisions that impact our communities and our children. On a personal note, my family, we chose Longfellow. When we moved to Eau Claire seven years ago, one of my biggest concerns was finding space where my children see themselves reflected in their communities. My husband is black, my children are biracial. And Longfellow is one of the few schools in our district that I can walk into and see children who look like mine. That my children can look across the classroom and see themselves reflected. And Longfellow has created a space where that diversity is celebrated and honored. Many other parents tonight shared how their schools are like the second home. And I oftentimes share when I talk about Longfellow, that when we go to Longfellow, it's like coming home. So, yeah, I just am really curious to learn about the process and how you will meaningfully engage our communities in the problem-solving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Samuel Durbin.
My name is Samuel Durbin, and I don't really have any new information. I don't have any new information to, sorry, to share with the board. But what I can say is that I loved my school. Longfellow Elementary is, road to Long and North High School and even UW-Madison, Longfellow Elementary is the only school where I have truly felt that sense of community. I still call myself Longfellow Lion to this day, and I know that every single student that I've met personally from Longfellow, that's what they associate with themselves with. That's what they call their home. And I know that this exact same thing is true for the Flynn and Roosevelt children and their graduates. They love their schools. That's where they felt safe. So I don't have any facts or anything I can share with you, but I can ask you guys to please don't take our schools away from us. Thank you.
Next is Angela Way.
And Angela Wong. Would like to address three components: transparency, accessibility, and opportunities. Few matters relating to these three items. The second-grade curriculum relating to taking out materials that amplifies LGBTQIA+ plus voices and the pride flag, because it is believed not to be equal development to a need for. First, whole power. And kids are ready. Young people are ready. And I always inform my own students about what Dr. Sims Bishop talks about, windows, mirrors, and sliding doors. What do we say to students and their families and communities when they don't see themselves reflected in the curriculum? How are they being welcomed in the district? When we delete voices from our curriculum, it is directly and indirectly saying to our students, "They are not..." That's my first component. Connects back to the transparency, accessibility, and opportunities. The second component, very similar to what folks have been sharing tonight, relates back to the demographic trends report. We have seen and heard a surprise that has been represented this evening. Pride from students, pride from families, pride from communities, and of course, from our ESC staff members, colleagues. I would also like to highlight, when such decision-making process is happening... I would also like to highlight, when such decision-making process is happening, who are at the table? Who is present? Who is being represented? When we encourage public input, who is not at the table? That goes back to accessibility. I would recommend not rushing through any of these items. Instead, recommending hosting community forums. Community forums that are not in the school board building, in the community, in their respective communities, so that families, students, community members can access such locations and not having to worry about transportation to get to the school board meeting. And so really thinking about that component, that we must be able and willing to authentically engage with students, families, and staff in order to provide transparency, accessibility, and opportunities as relate to our curriculum, as relate to our schools that serves all of our students.
Thank you. This is Sarah Thielen. Sarah Thielen, and she happens to walk in, we'll add her in if we can. Well, I'm just saying, even if it's out of order, I'll just put her back in the end. Sure. Then next is Morgan Shimperley.
Good job.
I mean, I missed a lot of other ones, sorry.
Okay, okay. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have a bit of a circumstance with me of these areas. And it's the... We grow up in the Eau Claire public school system, even though I didn't come from here. But as soon as I stepped out of college, I ended up being hired as support staff at the Chippewa Valley Montessori School. This was back in the day where we had to knock doors to try to get enrollment up. It was a tough go, right? There was always fear it was going to be closed. Through that experience, it inspired me to go back to school and get certified to teach. So a decade later, I go back, I get certified to teach, I end up teaching at Longfellow. And it felt like home as soon as I walked in. And it allowed me to give the Montessori to my daughters, and they could attend it then, because we could not be in the same school, not know how to put their socks on if mom was in the building. So anyway, a very personal relationship with those schools. And I have been in seeing, you know, being with Montessori as long as I have, I can still have that taste in my mouth of what it felt like to close Lincoln. And that left a stain on Montessori, it left a stain on the families for many, many years. So that worries me that there's new schools, new schools. And what really comes down to is like, all of these schools are amazing schools because they're small and because the staff is able to know students, and their students feel safe, their students feel welcome. And I also know from my history that a school inside of a school doesn't always go well, especially when there are hard feelings on how it got to be that way. So I think that's a huge ask on this community to rock their communities, rock the world, and share that community. And I don't think it's impossible. I do think that we do need to learn from history, learn what we've seen, what works and what doesn't. I've seen the immersion program in Longfellow become part of our core, of our story. And so all of that work has worked so far to create that community. Is that threat of dissolving that scares me. I feel like these schools that are kind of up on the chopping block are these diverse little nuggets that we have in Eau Claire. And we have a history of settling into bigger, larger machines. And those are hard to keep track of, they are hard to keep... They're hard to keep that heartbeat, it's hard to keep community, it's hard for kids to feel safe. So I am just here all small schools. I think small schools are really, and I hear that in everybody who spoke tonight. And we love our kids, we love our families. And I think we absolutely can share that love. I don't think it's going to benefit our kids. I think we need to keep our communities small in order to stay united as a big district.
Now we've got Sarah Thielen.
Hi, I'm Sarah Thielen, and I'm yielding my time to my daughter, Melissa Thielen.
Okay, so I am Melissa Thielen. I am a seventh grader at South Middle School. And I went to Flynn for kindergarten, all the way up to fifth grade. And I want to just say how much support they gave me. And so just think about what it... I made all my friends at Flynn, all my friends. And think about how all the younger kids, the first graders, the kindergartners, the second graders, even the third graders would feel. They don't have their friends' addresses or phone numbers and stuff, and they got separated from them. This would put an entire rift through all these kids who have only made friends from school. And I just want to say, that would be horrible. Imagine how you would have felt, how you would feel if you didn't have any access to any of the people around you. Total isolation. And these kids would be split apart and probably not see each other ever again. And it's not just the kids seeing each other too, it's the teachers. The teachers have lent so much support to all these kids, especially people with learning disabilities and who relied on these teachers and the special education given at Flynn that has made them able to be like this. I am the fourth generation who went all the way through Flynn, okay? And I went from being a little kid screaming in the hallways and hiding all her reading assignments, getting Fs on her tests and feeling horrible about it. I went from that to being an all A student because of the teacher support at my school. I wouldn't have been able to get here without... I can list off the teachers too. Ms. Mitra, and then who helped me with my emotions. Ms. McRaven, who actually went through COVID-19 with me in her second grade class. She battled it like a champ. Yes, my fourth grade teacher, my fourth grade teachers, my fifth grade teachers, these teachers who have endured horrible ridicule by the cruel kids. Those, they would get their job taken away from them. That's what you're saying here. Kids split apart, teachers losing their jobs. I know how I would have felt if I was a kid and I had my school broken up within the first week of me going there. I would have wondered what I did wrong, what I could have done, or what we could have ever done that would have made this national peace site fumble. Okay? This school means so much to us, don't take it away.
This is Emily Freeman.
I was in the overflow room. I'm Emily Freeman. First of all, I want to thank everyone who is here in support of public education. I originally came to talk about a different equity issue before the board, before I got the letter about potentially closing some of our neighborhood schools. And so I want to start with that. My child goes to the Montessori school, we love it. And I would never, ever advocate for expanding that school at the expense of any other school. Right? We need to work together. I'm a former public school teacher. I grew up in public schools. I work to get people to go into public schools. We need to keep our neighborhood schools, and there are brilliant minds in our community. And if we work together, I feel like there is a way to come up with a solution that will work for everyone. However, the other equity issue, right? Because it seems like we can't have a break this moment in time, that I wanted to talk about, it came to my attention from talking with parents and other members of the school district, that there is potential active censorship happening within the school district. Second grade social studies curriculum has a picture book that talks about the creation of the pride flag and how we can use art as protest. And that is needed more than ever. Taking those voices away, that representation, that causes harm in the same way that closing schools causes harm. Children need to see themselves, their families represented in the books that they are reading, that we as educators are sharing with them. And so I want to just share quotation that might sound familiar at this point. But in her dissent from Mahmudvi Taylor, Justice Sonia Sotomayor wrote about the dangers of censorship. And she stated, "Worse yet, the majority closes its eyes to the inevitable chilling effect of its ruling. Schools may instead censor their curricula, stripping material that risks generating religious objections. The court's ruling, in effect, thus hands a subset of parents the right to veto curricular choices, long left to locally elected school boards. Because I cannot countenance the court's contortion of our precedent and the untold harms that will follow, I dissent." And I really encourage you all to push back against this wave of censorship. Please do not engage in self-censoring. Much of my work, my research involves talking with middle and high school English teachers about censorship. And what I'm finding in the state of Wisconsin, teachers are scared. Teachers are self-censoring at rates of almost eighty percent in self-reported data. They are in for other jobs because they don't feel that their school district will support them making curricular choices that represent the equity that this district is claiming to represent and to uphold. So again, I think these issues go hand in hand. The decisions that we make about what we teach in schools go along with where it happens. And neighborhood schools are such an incredibly important part of our community that I want to see children in all the schools have access to teachers from their neighborhood communities and literature that represents the beautiful diversity of our community and our world.
Includes our public forum for the evening. We'll now move on to our regular legislative liaison report. Commissioner Tao.
There are two new partisan bills that I really think we should pay attention to. The first one is Assembly Bill 420 slash Senate Bill. The bill will seek to amend an existing bill that will mandate a full summer teacher. It includes four-day student teaching, English, operating, elementary, or secondary. And some previously has been suspended. And this bill to allow... The other one is Assembly Bill 45 slash Senate Bill 441. And this is a side policy as well. But it seeks to mandate two districts that are looking to... Are they offering human growth and development education programs? And mandating those schools to require them to teach student subjects. And so under the new amended, the new proposed bill, will include schools to have very detailed instructions on female development videos and in trimester, bitemaster presentations. Will also require schools to provide lessons, which are these kinds of things, that focuses on pregnancy in the house and also like the... Basically, what this will do is that it will... It will mandate schools who are teaching sex education to our district to recommend that. It will also give, it will change the Wisconsin sex ed framework to any, optional, optional right, foundations to be something like military, really detailed lessons on pregnancy, evil development, and parenting.
We'll move on to our consent agendas. For each of the consent agendas, the board considers approval with one vote without discussion. Items in the consent agenda have been discussed at a previous meeting or have been sent to the board with background material prior to the meeting. As always, we start with the superintendent's consent agenda, which tonight includes Human Resources employment report. Your motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. You move by Farrar, second by Zer. Motion is to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed, any abstention. Superintendent's consent agenda is approved. The board's consent agenda, which tonight includes minutes of board meetings, September 8th, 2025, amend OE2 equity commitment, or a summary statement for OE2 equity commitment, board summary statement for OE13, emergency superintendent succession. Your motion to approve the board's consent agenda. Second by Bika, second by Farrar. Motion is to approve the board's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed, any abstention. Board's consent agenda is approved. On the main body of our meeting tonight, we have one item of monitoring district operations, that is OE6 Personnel Administration. I will turn it over to Executive Director Golden for presentation, and then we'll have comments and questions. Welcome.
I'm going to turn it back over to our superintendent.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the HR department for putting this together with a bit of time and effort. But what I'll do is somewhat, for 6.1, as well as anything after 6.2, I really don't want to talk too much about that because not too much has changed. We're very happy with the data. We're happy Director Yang had shared quite a bit of survey data with HR. We work very closely with the HR department, the HR team especially. I know that the board, because that's where our focus was, was on 6.2. I did allude to that in my summary. Made some improvements, I believe, some improvements from last year's meeting throughout. If you remember, the 611 through the end is basically... Superintendent will not change compensation. There's certainly none of that going on, but those are very quick to go through. But really, 6.2, there are some concerns that Michelle had with the data. It didn't look great, she had some... She had some, she had some discussions, I believe, with Dr. Nordine. That as well. But really, that's what we want to, we wanted to focus on a bit tonight when we will. Transition to her, she'll explain kind of the specifics. Came to me right away. For Nordine right away. Yes, it's ultimately our, ultimately our staff. We want it to mirror our community. For our students to see teachers and staff more like them. So let, if you all discuss further.
Thank you. Just for the purposes of tonight, the data that I'm going to focus most zero in on is 6.2 indicator four. I'm obviously more than happy to answer any questions in any of the other sixes and any of those indicators. But in looking at indicator four, which is ECSD candidate and staff diversity will increase each year to more closely reflect the student population. When I started looking, looking at the data, I was, and especially after Surveying had pulled the data, I was like, this does, something doesn't feel right and something doesn't look right. Because there was a significant drop in the number of staff that we were hiring compared to the number of staff who were applying for our positions. And so in meeting with the HR team, our staffing specialists and others, we started drilling down on the data to say, where is this data coming from? What is the origin of it? Who pulled this data? And I don't want to blame anyone for any of this data, but what we maybe started to look at is there's so many different places to pull the data from. And so the other pieces that, especially in the applicant tracking system, which is WECAN, there are multiple people that apply for multiple positions. So when we were looking at the data, did we pull the data the first time? That pulled out the person that applied multiple times? And so, and we also had reporting data that wasn't included, such as I prefer not to answer. And was that included with people of color? Or was that included in, and so we just had a lot of questions around it. And so what we did is we created a really standard operating procedures for moving forward. And we cleaned up the data and looked through it and combed through it really well and made sure that next year in September of 26, the same data is being presented. So I feel like we are a little bit like we're starting over. But what I would say in indicator four is one, we're not in compliance. And that the our applicants of color do not reflect our student population and our staff of color do not reflect our population. So if you look at the first chart. Yep, where it says applicant, staff, and students self-identified as a person of color. That, that data out of the applicant data, we have had an increase, which has been nice over the, over the handful of years, over the last four years, we've had an increase. But I will also say, so I meet with HR directors across the state on a regular basis. We see each other every couple of months. And we read that earlier this month. And one of the issues that has come up is that they have an influx of what we would call SPAM. Applicants coming in from all different countries. And that when we drill down on applicants, what we're finding is that this is SPAM. And so we're, WECAN is trying to find a way to pull out SPAM. As of, like, someone's applying for a teaching position. This person might be in mechanical engineering or in a area that is outside of teaching, that would never have a teaching license to be able to teach in the state of Wisconsin. So I don't know if that reflects that. We weren't able to pull that data out. The other thing in this data that I'm not sure everyone's aware of is these are just applicants. These are not individuals who we've interviewed, if that makes sense. So if we did have 10 applicants for a position, we would not interview all of those candidates. That's just a number I'm making up. Specifically, the ones that are not qualified to maybe have an English teaching position or a teaching degree. So just so you are aware that that 11.31% is not in individuals that we're all interviewing. Interview if they didn't, are not qualified for that position. So if you look at the, the staff data, we started, our, our baseline was 4.63. And we're all the way up to 5.29. But that clearly doesn't match our students of color. And so we're very far off on that data. And we obviously want to continue to grow in that area. The other piece of data, as we look at indicator four, it doesn't say staff race. It says staff diversity. So in this report, I did add some staff climate survey data that we started collecting three years ago. And so this is just a sample of our staff. So these are only the individuals who competed, completed the staff climate survey. So we did include a non-binary population as well as LGBTQIA+ population. And I would like to continue and we would recommend that we would include that data because it represents a wider representation of diversity in our staff. Okay. If you look at the third. And you, can you show both of those at the same time? The data below, all those numbers really represent what that chart is above. And that is how we showed it last year, is applicants who self-identify as a person of color and then employees as a person of color. And then we also added the category prefer not to say, because we didn't know. Just said, just make that a standard, standard operating procedure. And then obviously the students are in the purple, which are higher and more of a 28% for the 24, 25 school year. On that graph on below, these numbers are small. I was trying to represent growth. There's obviously areas from growth from year to year, but there's also areas where we've moved upwards. But we just wanted that data to be able to look at. What are we going to focus on as we move forward? The last chart is really hard to see, but I have a bigger version of it. Hopefully you can scroll in on it on your computer. But this data is based on FTE, not individuals. So this is FTE across the state. So I took Eau Claire School District plus 10 other school districts above that are the biggest in the state. So we're represented in, they're in the top 11. And pulled, and if you look all the way over to the right, you can look at the last two columns, I think, that are most represented. You can see 4.92 is the Eau Claire School District. We're the lowest amongst that group. And so then you look at the next one, obviously, is Janesville with the highest percentage of 53.35% in the Milwaukee School District of people of color. So that's the percentage of staff overall of color within their school district. And then the next thing that I looked at is the community data. So we looked at the community data. What Surveying presented last week was that 14.77% of our Eau Claire community. Is that 14.44% compared to the, this isn't our individual data. This is the FTE, so it looks lower than our other data. And then it was just interesting to look at across the top 10 districts, specifically Madison. If you look at their people of color in their school district, at 26%, plus their community is at 26%. So I think there's some lessons learned there. I know that they did have a full strategic plan. I feel that there is really many lessons learned within there. At the, when I sat down this evening to the board meeting, I was, realized that I received an email from a researcher out of UW-Madison. And so I wasn't able to include the data, but he was able to pull like total Wisconsin, all out of the state of Wisconsin, about 7.5, 7.5% of our schools, Wisconsin are at 7.5%, which increased from 21, 22 from 6%. So we are getting a number, greater number of people of color who are licensed educators, which was really exciting to see. And then he pulled it out by CISA. So CISA 10, so it's our area. What, who are the individuals that we can draw from? Is, it's pretty low. It's at 2.5%. So in CISA 10, we have 2.5% of our teachers licensed are people of color. And then low, there's only three other people are just, CISA is lower than us, which is CISA 3. Is that 1%, which is like South La Crosse. CISA 11 is at 1.5%. That's Turtle Lake. And then CISA 5 is 2.4, we're 2.5. So CISA 4 or 5 is where Milwaukee, for example, that's CISA 1. They're at about 16%. So we just, we pulled it by the data of like, what population of people do we draw from? Because not always do we have people that move across the state for positions. We're often competing amongst our neighbors. With that, that is the summary. And clearly, we have not met that indicator. But as we move forward to a commitment to improve, that I think it's really important that we have some very strong goals and making sure that we're defining and communicating our DEI commitment. And I will work with our director of DEI, Dan Gage, to make sure that we're including all of our statements within our applications. The other piece that I, in meeting with my other HR director peers, is that they have found success when they put that on the WECAN posting. So with the Eau Claire School District, that is a statement that we put right on the homepage of our WECAN. And then the other piece is broadening our recruitment channels and partnering with additional DEI-focused job boards. One I mentioned earlier, learning from, since learn from Madison, what have they done to increase population of color? And then really maybe working more hand in hand with Diversity and Ed, which is a formerly known as Teachers of Color magazine that really promotes diversity in education. And then our training and supporting hiring teams and making sure that maybe we even have indicator four on the top of our hiring, which says to hire staff that more closely reflect our student population. And then obviously to continue to track and report, which is really important because if we're not tracking, not making progress. So I would say that our measurement would be that in September of 26, our numbers are going to change and that we're going to have better growth. And that making sure that our hiring practices have changed and that we have made significant strides in our commitment to.
Thank you. Now open it up to comments and questions from the board and our student reps. You have once again drawn straw. Commissioner Tao.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for the mutation. I really appreciate the data that you pulled. I think you were right when you say that the lessons do come from us. And we hope that we do that and that we continue to have, we hope to really want to be really having teachers in the district that present our student needs. It's how few comments, I, I noticed that, you know, since we started monitoring this indicator, that there hasn't been a lot of improvement. I think that clearly indicates that whatever it is that we're doing, it's not working. So I would encourage a more creative way or innovative way of thinking. And again, like you mentioned earlier, reach out to Madison to learn from them. How they have increased their, their, you know, student, of students there as well. Yeah, but whatever it is that we're doing is clearly not working. And so as a board, we're working on the budget. And so I know that as, as a district, we're also very competitive and open. I also know that like, well, a lot of like POC votes and by-pass votes. Now, actually, the people that when they're looking at jobs, you know, take students. And so there are other barriers that prevent people to. What is it about this? Of preventing more diverse group of teachers, even people teachers who want new content. That's all the comments. The other thing too, like you brought in patients to remove the way. I don't think that necessarily. So I feel like that really contradicts, contradicts with all these. And our district's value under inclusion. Obviously, I will encourage the administrator to like, ways of passing data to me without, without removing what they were.
I just have a question. Where, where are you looking at that?
There was a recommendation. The definition of diverse. And the recommendation to not, it's. We had a question.
I think that is meant to say that to remove abilities, socioeconomic status, and language because we don't collect that data. If it says somewhere that we're removing word diverse, that is not meant to say that.
Commissioner Chase.
Thanks for the information. When I look at the, the bar graph, it does look like we're increasing applicants, although what you said, we'll see. SPAMs, that's an evil. I'm curious if we're not translating those applicants into staff. That they're not getting into the interview process or they get there and they're declining offers. So I'm curious, kind of echo what Ha said. Is there something that I'm sure they have a lot to consider when accepting the offer as well? I'm just wondering what we can learn about that side of things to the interview, the offer. Are we, you know, how many of those applicants are actually being translated into that process? And where are we losing folks along the way? Something that came to mind again, appreciated. I'm really excited to see growth next year.
Commissioner DeMent.
Director Golden, thank you so much for the explanation on the data. I really appreciate that. One thing I would maybe want to bring up is our ownership or we have going on with the city because we want to attract those candidates to this job. We can really only deal with the job part of it. So whatever we can do with the city to make it more attractive as a, as a location to lay some roots, I think. Getting as well.
Dr. Becca.
Back onto OE6.2, on page 11. When we're talking about the strategies. Because I want to push on that a little bit, in that the strategies do look somewhat familiar to past years. And we know what this is a fiercely competitive job market and that we need to do something radically different than we've done before. So because if you, and as Commissioner Tao said, what we have been doing is not working. So when you see this lineup, if you could really talk about what, what really is different? Or if there are other ideas perhaps that are, I suppose, safe from, recently from those.
Well, I think. Yes, I think we've done many of these things. I, I have partnered with Diversity and Ed, if WECAN will, and more than happy. He's willing to work with us in the school district, saying it is a difficult area. CISA 10, this whole area is a very difficult spot to be able to recruit teachers to. But he's willing to delve into it with me. I think the WECAN piece and just lessons learned from other HR directors across the state, putting it where people are applying. So making sure that our equity statement is, when they first click on the Eau Claire School District application page, is that what they see? Is that a place that they want to apply? Is it, is it a place that they would fit and feel comfortable? And then I think just making sure that we're doing more, training our hiring managers and making sure that we have our indicator four on 6.2 up in front. Making sure that as we hire, having the words to hire staff that more closely reflects our student population is going to be really important. I think that being at the forefront of them versus. I think that being at the forefront of them versus training that they had a month ago and now we're interviewing and someone with a smile versus, and I'm being random about that, that's not how our process works, but really making sure that that indicator is in front of people on a regular basis every time we hire. And the other piece is lessons learned from Madison. So creating that partnership. So I haven't been able to connect with Madison prior to this. And so I included, I think, lessons learned from Madison might better.
For small points, page 21, as far as one of the pieces of evidence, the bus tour is listed under Indicator 2. The percent is low. And I thought that the activity was discontinued.
We did continue, discontinue it as a result of that. So I, let's see, if you look at NEO. So that was, we clicked on the NEO link. We did remove that bus tour and it just, because it was too much time taken away and we changed it to a social social activity at.
I guess if I might be seeing something, it's just in the monitoring.
Okay, yep, you're right.
And then final, in 6.10, Indicator 3, page 23. This is for, I'm wondering about the ability to change the evidence. It speaks more to the effectiveness of the ERC. I think as is the evidence is indirect, we don't know how they made improvements.
6.10. Which one is it? I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I get that point.
You look at page 23. 6.10, Indicator 3. So it's currently stated that, because yes, we received and we approved the modifications, but we really don't know the.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Actually did contribute. I know that's a pretty important.
Yes, they are. Just for everyone's benefit, the ERC group, we sit down multiple times throughout the year and go through NEO updates or legal updates and changes. And we vet everything through them. So us will be a little around that process.
Mr. Zer.
Thanks for the presentation. I, I just wanted to point out something that caught my eye and particularly, and it might have just been in the context of a broader discussion going on tonight. But the, in 6.1, Indicator 1, there, there is a, a statement that says strive to include more voices in district decisions. And the survey data, the staff climate survey data shows that that is our lowest performing area of staff. Really, I guess, happiness with their, you know, with the district. And I guess I, I want to see that improve. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not in the business here of telling you how to get there. But I, I want to see more documentation of that improving. And I guess to that point, what, what is the rationale behind removing the don't know option on the staff climate survey? I was curious about that because in a, in a, in a statement like administration includes staff at my school in decision-making, there may be a very reasonable point where they don't know. I don't know if that, you know, I'm new here. I don't know if they involve people. That seems like an important data point. And so we've now taken that option away. So now they have to choose, I agree or I don't agree. And so, and that's true for all of the staff climate survey responses this go around. And I'm wondering what the rationale was for removing that? And then how now we trust the data of, of that survey to be accurate in its growth? Because if you look, if you look, yes, the, the, the don't knows skewed to the positive. Most of them, if you, if you do the math, most of them skewed positive. However, there's places where disagree or strongly disagree actually grew once we took away that don't know option. And so first of all, are those accurate responses? And second of all, why remove it when it does seem a reasonable data point for the district to say, boy, if the staff in our buildings don't know how staff are involved, they don't know where to get involved, they don't know in what capacity involvement is occurring, whether it's through the ERGC, G?
ERC.
ERC. However, that's happening, then that is, that is an area of growth and engagement for our district administration to educate staff in how to be involved. And so I guess what, what's the rationale? Are there any concrete plans or, or discussions about how we improve staff involvement? You know what I mean? Moving forward, I guess, is kind of where I wanted to.
So obviously, this is a district survey. However, it's broken down by building. So building leadership teams also look at this data. So if I'm a school A and my staff empowerment is the lowest, they do their building leadership team. The way that I'm understanding that this happens is that they want to improve those goals annually for their school. So they have that data and they look at that data. I don't have the answer of why I don't know was removed, honestly. That discussion, but so as a district, we continue to make sure that we have a focus in all of these areas, but building leadership teams really own their school data. That makes sense.
That, that's helpful, yeah. And I'm happy that mimics student data as well. I think that's important for those administrators to have that autonomy there. But I would just encourage us to, when we're looking at, at data, when we remove something, provide a rationale for why we are, why we are removing it. And then how the board is to interpret data without it, you know what I mean? Because it, it, if you just glance at it, I was struggling to be like, well, where did the light blue go? And that was all I was looking at. And, and it, it just created a moment, well, then I was just confused as to whether it was positive or negative, you know what I mean? So I, I think that for me as a board member, similar to what happens when the state changes how they measure test scores, I want to know if some sort of data point may be inaccurate or we've removed something or changed something. So this is really the first year that we're looking at it in this specific way. It's really helpful for me to not have to that out my own freaking hour. You go long.
Yeah, they're very long.
Dr. Farrar.
Again, thank you for the report. I also just wanted to briefly comment on page 6 and the commensurate needed to staff empowerment. And I did also want to just make a connection to the, the top, the larger topics that have been brought up in our public comment today. Foundry changes, repurposing or closing schools, as well as the comments on curriculum changes. Because I think that those are issues where I'm receiving contact from staff members who some were unaware if they were allowed to speak at public comment. And some staff members are feeling unsure about if they're able to speak up about what they would like to share about these large decisions affecting a lot of people across the district, whether it's in relation to our buildings or our regular decisions. And so that does seem like an issue. And again, I'm not here to say how to address that, that I've received a number of messages to that effect suggests that there are some communication issues and, and at times perhaps an uncertainty about what, what their role is and, and if their, if their thoughts and, and expertise are really welcome.
Olives.
I'm shaking one.
Mr. Zer.
So I forgot to say one thing. And I, if I don't say it here, then I, I do put in a boil a disservice. When we are talking about how we create opportunity for voices who have been historically limited become educators in a place and a space and a CISA like this, we need to grow our own. We have kids in our buildings who are of minority roots, who do not see themselves reflected in the staff that are around them. And if we don't say, if we, if we can't catch that moment of, of them thinking that being a teacher might be awesome, capture that somehow, and have a scholarship fund, a pathway, something that we do innovatively as a school district to build. I mean, talk about, we have a room full of ECASD pride here. We have young people who are growing up in this community and who may, you know, if, if there's some way that we could partner with the University of Eau Claire, where the first, you know, there's that great Madison program where you can go to teach. I don't know if we're still doing it, where you go and the last two years of your, of your teacher education is covered if you come and teach. What if we sponsor a portion of that for those students? A portion of their undergraduate or University of Eau Claire to figure that out or work with students to figure that out? So there is real opportunity for us to come as a large school district with a lot of influence. And I think we have a community who would support and get behind our future of our teachers. And the future of this mission is that all of our kids see themselves. And as a board member, I would happily put that in a referendum. I would happily consider that. And I think we need to be bold and think of bold solutions. And we need to ask our communities what they think and if, if, if they would support that or how they would go about it. Because I do think that there is something here that we have the possibility to say that what we're doing isn't working. And we should take the bull by the horns, if you will, and just see if we can do it ourselves. We have a lot of power and influence in this region. I think we should do it.
I asked for a motion to approve the Superintendent Johnson.
I was going to get on to Dr. Farrar's remarks when she just stepped out. She didn't have ESP. Just to share in public here, but also with the board. I think it's been a climate and a culture here where you had, you had former staff members and we had a present staff member, at least one, speak in public comment. My only ask is that when folks have concerns, whether it's about the curriculum, whether it's about anything, when they contact their, their immediate supervisor or in this case about curriculum, Andy Van Vliet or Heather Grant, Cynthia Poore, Cheryl Radke first to do so. We want to hear that feedback. If we're not able to solve it or if we're not able to resolve it, then people certainly have the opportunity to share their thoughts and public comment with the board. Have not been upset with any staff member entire career here. This is my sixth year of spoken. I want to reiterate that. We have some administrators here. We have some former administrators here from years back. And I just share that as a result, those comments, but also to assist in our six process.
Further follow-ups? You're none. And we should move to our assessment of cultural progress on OE 6. I would hear a motion to approve OE 6. The motion by Dement, second by Beekah. Motion is to approve OE 6 as presented. Any discussion on the motion? We have a motion to approve OE 6. We're in the discussion on the motion. You none will call the question. Motion is to approve OE 6 as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed. Any abstention? 6 is approved. One more item tonight, and that's why everyone is still sitting out there. And that is an update from the demographic trends facility planning committee. We're fortunate to have Kim Kohler with us, who is the administrative liaison to that committee and has been for eight years. I know you joined while I was a member of that committee and I've been off of that committee for seven years. So thank you for being here tonight. Superintendent Johnson, I'll turn it to you to begin.
Thank you. Board agenda setting. The term and we would have between 20 minutes to present over the course of about the entire year last year that certainly challenged to put all that together. Couple of things I'd like to share. People who had spoken today, people who are present in the crowd and in the overflow, really appreciate, honor those discussions. People talked to me all last week and a little bit this week. Well, are you ready for public comment? You ready for public comment? Yeah, because I knew this is exactly how the people were very respectful. People were thinking of solutions and how they can help. And again, seeing former administrators in here, former school administrators, district administrators, present staff and former staff and families, it really means a lot. I had received, people ask, well, what about the feedback that you've got? I've already gotten feedback since Wednesday when I hit send at 5:35. The first response was at 5:58. That's where my feedback generally gets started. It's not stopped. And it's not stopped during public comment. It's not stopped with some people that have spoken tonight or that I spoke to in the hall. So I just want to say, I really appreciate the emails that I've received directly. Numerous, yes, but very important. And so I'm using that for feedback to then share with others in the future and certainly publicly. So with that, I'm sorry for that two minutes. I'll get right to our, to our notes, Kim. Good evening. Tonight's presentation deals directly with the understanding of the demographic trends of facility planning committee, which has been serving the needs of the district for almost 10 years. Tonight, the board and public will understand its principles, background and process, the makeup of committee members, the administrative charge, the data examine, the process for exploring solutions, the development of recommendations and the next steps in this process to address the change. Let's say charge. Since its inception, almost 10 years ago, the demo and trends facility planning committee is guided by these 12 principles. Options and recommendations are based on these 12 items. Most recently, this was integral in our 2022 Capitol referendum. Again, a history lesson. School boundaries are dynamic. Forty years ago, there were 20 schools in our district. Ten of those schools were on one section schools, meaning there was one class at each grade level. Eight were two section schools, having two classrooms for each grade level. And our largest schools were Sam Davy and Longfellow with the capacity to have three classrooms of each grade level. Today, ECASD has 12 elementary schools, not including Montessori. Many of the small schools from 40 years ago were consolidated into larger three to four section schools, although there are eight fewer schools. Now, the overall capacity of our elementary schools increased from 32 sections in 1985 to 37 in 2025. Demo and trends committee follows a cycle of monitoring and analyzing data, exploring options that align with the 12 guiding principles and then sharing potential solutions with district administration and the school board. People were very quick to note, they knew this in the messaging that I had shared. This is preliminary. We want to show the progress and we want to be transparent with this. Did I have shared this in August? Yes, I could have, but not while summer's going on. People aren't paying attention. There's never a perfect time to share this, but we wanted to share it at this time. Here's a look at the voting committee members throughout this year's demo and trends process. These members have served for some time due to the backgrounds and the age of their children. Parents represent various school levels, elementary, middle and high schools and various attendance boundaries. For those folks in the audience that can't quite see, if there's an asterisk there, the newest members. And there are a couple of questions that I've received throughout, you know, how do people, how are people on this committee? Dr. Radeed could certainly speak to it because. how do people, how are people on this committee? Dr. Radeed could certainly speak to it, because he was a former demo and trends member. We've had other members of the board, like Josh Clemmons, Josh Clemmons, and former Josh Clemmons, as well as Phil Lyons, who they served on that committee before they became board. So just a little bit of a history lesson there. Non-voting resource members, Kim, she is, before last year, I think she was off for a year. We have Abby Johnson, and Abby's absence, Kim picked that back up again. And that was integral to the 2022 Capitol referendum process. Jeff Snester, certainly with Buildings and Grounds, I'm there. I'm contributing with, if a question is asked, then I'll answer, but I'm there to listen. Marissa Pompin was our former executive secretary for business services. She had resigned January, February, and we just didn't fill in. I know Dr. Elworthy had been part of many of the meetings this year, as well as other principals and others in the community. And I'll transition to Kim.
Thank you. I am noticing that there's some automatic advancement of slides, so if you see some flickering back and forth, I'm just putting it back to where I'm speaking. Okay, we'll try that. Okay. So tonight, I would like to share with the board a summary of the demo and trends committees' work over the past 12 months, beginning with the fall of 2024, when the committee analyzed student enrollment and school capacity data. It's the, the grid. Thank you. There you go. At each meeting, the committee reviewed enrollment data. So this page was printed for you, so that it's easier for you to read. Our official count is the third Friday count. This year's count hasn't been finalized yet, so the 25, 26 numbers are unofficial. In fact, today, I was alerted to a couple of changes on this. So I think if you look at the printed copy, you'll see some changes specifically, I believe, Montessori numbers for this year, and then there was a misprint for Longfellow. What this table does is it shows trends over time. So if you follow it from right to left, you can monitor enrollment and capacity over time. So, for example, the very top line is Flynn Elementary School. And you can see that in 2014, 15, Flynn had 297 students and was at 94% capacity. Following Flynn to the left, you can see the enrollment at Flynn has declined over time. And as the percentages decrease, you can see it move through the various levels on the legend in the upper right-hand corner. The committee uses this document to identify schools that remain above or below the targeted range of roughly 80 to 85%. The committee also monitors the impact of boundary changes indicated by the blue stars. So as an example, in 2018, 19, high school boundaries were changed, and you can see that change reflected in the numbers at North and Memorial following that. 2020 and 2021, there was an elementary boundary change, and the 21, 22 flexible boundaries among Manns, Meadowview, and Robbins were created to alleviate pressure. Terry, next slide. After examining current and past enrollment trends, the considerations for the committee involved three main themes. First, secondary schools are within the targeted range. Second, there's an underutilization of space at the elementary level. And third, additional space demands exist for Montessori and early childhood programming. The committee then examined additional data. So I'm going to share some of those data sets over the next few minutes. I just want to emphasize that the committee spent several months studying and exploring this data. One of our committee members, Ryan Petrie, works for the city planning department, and one of the pieces of data that he shared was in relation to the construction of new dwellings, and you can see that information here. On the next slide, you can see longitudinal data for the past 35 years, and it shows the peaks and valleys for new construction in the city. The committee also examined, committee members discussed birth rate trends. Ryan Weichelt, a demographer for our committee, emphasized that although Eau Claire is a growing city, birth rates are declining, and our declining enrollment aligns with declining birth rates at local, state, and national levels, which you can see here. Slide, Terry. The committee examined data for specific areas within the city. For example, this map identifies the location of new single-family, two-family, and multifamily units throughout the city. You can see that it's superimposed on the attendance areas within the school district, which was helpful for the committee's discussion around where growth may occur in the city, or in the district. And then in November of 2024, the committee members visited a sampling of five elementary schools. The committee members at those schools explored different sizes of schools, how space was used, and the learning environment of each of those buildings. And that led us to this winter and spring of 24, 25. During the next phase in the process, the committee really explored potential solutions. This occurred throughout the winter and into the spring of last school year. The committee developed a problem statement and key indicators based on the understanding of the data. These were approved by administration with some slight editing. All of the options explored by the committee were assessed by their ability to address this problem statement and these key indicators. The committee then began brainstorming solutions. So in the following slides, I'll share a process that, the process that the committee used to explore each option. And although the process is summarized on just a few slides and in a few minutes, the committee invested hours digging into each option, looking at capacity, challenges, opportunities, and overall impact. So the purpose tonight is to share an overview, but no, the work of the committee is much, much more in-depth. As an example, one option examined by the committee was to repurpose North Star into a large elementary school. You can see here on the slide that for each option, the committee reviewed information such as capacity and enrollment data that's seen on the slide. They also examined facility needs. In relation to facility needs, the green arrow indicated opportunities that would serve students well if North Star were converted into an elementary school. For example, the ability to block similar grade levels together. And then the yellow arrow indicated challenges that North Star would bring to an elementary level, such as a carpeted cafeteria or the pool. The group studied boundary maps to identify how the option impacted other schools, how transportation might be impacted, and the impact on the enrollment path as students in that area moved from pre-K through kindergarten. And so we spent a lot of time diving into our district boundary map that's pictured here. And here, we looked at data. For example, you'll notice that shifting all North Star students to the two other middle schools would result in over, an overcapacity issue at the other buildings, effectively placing middle school in the red zone. So after exploring this option, or each option, the committee determined whether the option should be explored further, or if it was recommend, or if it was not recommended. In the case of repurposing North Star to a large elementary school, the committee determined it was not feasible, and it did not recommend that option. So I'll just walk you through that with another option that the committee explored. Another option that was brought forth from the committee member was to absorb Longfellow Elementary School. On demo and trends, absorbing a school means to move the students at that school to other Eau Claire area, Eau Claire area school district schools, and then to no longer utilize the building, effectively closing it. The committee followed the same process that I shared with option one, North Star. They examined enrollment and facility needs. They looked at challenges and opportunities, and then additionally, they looked at options for absorbing students at Longfellow. So Longfellow is unique, because some students live in the Longfellow attendance area, while other students, those in the dual immersion program, come from throughout the district. So the 127 dual immersion students that you can see on this slide would need to be absorbed by one school, keeping the program as a whole, but that school could be anywhere in the district. At the same time, Longfellow neighborhood students needed to be absorbed by schools that were near the Longfellow neighborhood. While the committee explored options for absorbing, other schools in the district were placed in tier, in tiers. Tier one schools are schools that share a boundary with the school that's being absorbed. In this case, Flynn, Northwoods, Roosevelt, and Lake Shore, they all share a boundary with Longfellow Elementary School. Tier two schools are one boundary removed. For example, Manns touches Flynn, and Flynn touches Longfellow. And then tier three schools are two boundaries removed. So for example, Meadowview touches Flynn, or Manns, Manns touches Flynn, and Flynn touches Longfellow. The data, this data was important for the committee, is absorbing a school changes boundaries, and it can create a ripple effect impacting several schools. In this case, looking strictly at the 165 students in the Longfellow attendance area, the data indicates that the schools in tier one have the capacity to absorb those schools, or those students. So Terry, if you scroll up just a little bit, oh, I meant scroll down, I guess, sorry. Oh, yes, because this is the PDF and not the updated, but scroll a little bit so we can see the numbers on the bottom of the, nope, the other way. Right there. Do you see seats available? 300 and 169, or 390 and 169? That's where the committee said 165 students could be absorbed, just within tier one, creating less of a ripple effect. Following their study of the data, the committee determined that they should explore this option further. So they kept Longfellow kind of on the board, so to say. And on the next slide, Terry? Absorbing Longfellow remained a potential solution through the remainder of the process. To represent that idea, it's shown here in green. The committee explored several options to repurpose a school, meaning that the neighborhood students would be shifted to surrounding schools, so that the school itself could be used in a different way. In this case, the committee was looking for space to expand Montessori and move dual immersion students from Longfellow. So that was, that's what the repurpose would be for. For each of the, these options, again, the committee discussed enrollment and capacity, they discussed facility needs, they discussed challenges and opportunities. And each of the schools that they talked about in this phase are in green on that enrollment chart that we shared with you on paper, indicating that they're currently at 70% capacity or lower. And that included, as you can see on this slide and the next one, Lake Shore Elementary School, Slane Elementary School, Roosevelt Elementary School, Northwoods Elementary School, and Flynn Elementary School. Terry, if you keep scrolling, you'll see that those schools are listed. The committee dove deep into each of those options, and additional data or information was frequently requested. For example, on the map slide, the committee asked for more information about new construction across the district. Again, Ryan Petrie, who is a committee member, but also works in the city planning office, generated this map to show residential permits over the last seven years. He broke them down by areas of the district, as well as by single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. One of the 12 principles of the committee is to minimize the impact on transportation. The committee asked for data about the impact of absorbing students from Longfellow. Student Transit and Jim Fai reported that if Longfellow neighborhood students are absorbed at Northwoods and Lake Shore, current routes could be used to accommodate the new riders, and he projected there would be no minimal additional cost to the district. However, if students were absorbed at other schools, additional costs might be incurred. In some cases, the committee brainstormed options where information was needed before it could be explored. For example, the committee was curious about possibly moving fifth graders into middle school, and then reducing the number of elementary schools. The committee reached out to the teaching and learning department, who reported that modifying grade levels would result in adjustments to programming that would require intensive support to facilitate the change. Questions were raised about teaching and learning's capacity to do that work, in addition to supporting other important priorities, such as elementary reading in Act 20. So ultimately, that then wasn't explored any, any further. So these examples provide a glimpse into the process that the committee used as they explored their options. And following the exploration of several options, three of them rose to the top. Each of them centered around absorbing or closing one elementary school and repurposing a second. And these are those three options. Option 3B, and they're not named option 1, 2, 3, only because the committee explored so many options, we tried to keep the same numbering that the committee used. Option 3B indicated that students at Longfellow would be absorbed into other schools, and that the facility would be closed. Additionally, Flynn would be repurposed from a neighborhood school to a dual immersion and Montessori II site. Students in the Flynn neighborhood would be moved to surrounding schools. Option 3C called for Longfellow students to be absorbed, and the school closed. In this scenario, Roosevelt would be repurposed from a neighborhood school to a dual immersion in Montessori II site. Roosevelt, the neighborhood students, at Roosevelt, the neighborhood students would be moved to surrounding schools. And then finally, in option four, Flynn and Roosevelt would be impacted. At one of them, the students would be absorbed, and the school would be closed. At the other, the neighborhood students would be moved, and the building would be repurposed to house the dual immersion and Montessori II program. These two schools were explored, because they're the only two remaining two-section schools in the district. And the committee guidelines indicate that any new elementary schools will serve a minimum of three sections of students at each grade level. During this phase of the work, the committee members utilized this matrix to compare each of the potential solutions to the 12 guiding principles of the committee. The next slide shows an example of what that looked like. So this table was used as a source to examine the principles of reliable and current demographic data, balanced socioeconomic makeup of schools, and the consideration of the cost to maintain a school. Next slide, Terry. So the following four slides will illustrate the process that the committee followed during this phase. Again, while it's summarized in just a couple of slides, please know that the committee members invested hours in this analysis. In this example, the committee examined the option of absorbing Longfellow and repurposing Flynn. Because Flynn would continue to be used, the capacity of Flynn and facility maintenance needs were considered by the committee. The committee considered the location of impacted schools relative to each other, and within the district. That's the next slide, Terry. They considered the location of the impacted schools, so in this case, both impacted schools, relative to one another and within the district. On this map, Longfellow has an X indicating that it would be closed, and Flynn is circled, indicating that it would be repurposed. The table on the right side of this slide reflects the impact on capacity within this scenario. So you can see that if the two schools were removed from the total capacity column, but the students remained with the current enrollment, the overall enrollment at elementary would be at 81.7%, which is in the targeted range. This phase was complex due to potential ripple effects on boundaries. So Ray French is an economic developer and a committee member, summarized this work by saying, "We want to make the geographical impact of change as small as possible." In this phase, we revisited tier one, two, and three schools. So I will explain this slide a little bit. In this scenario, Longfellow would be absorbed and closed. It's reflected in the top right-hand corner. So Terry, can you show that type, the top right corner? It's reflected in the top right corner where Longfellow's tier one schools are listed. However, Flynn would no longer be available as a tier one school for Longfellow, because in this scenario, it would be repurposed. As a result, it's grayed out in the Longfellow data. As a result, it's grayed out in the Longfellow data on the top. Roosevelt and Lake Shore are circled in that area because they share tier one and two schools with Flynn. So we had to identify kind of crossover between the two schools. And then Terry, if you scroll so we can see the Flynn information, there you go. The bottom table includes tier one, two, and three schools for Flynn. Because Lake Shore and Roosevelt overlap with the Longfellow list, they may not be available to absorb students. So with this information, the committee discussed which schools would be impacted by potential boundary changes, and whether or not that would move from tier one to tier two and potentially tier three of the chart. Next slide. And for each of these discussions, as the committee considered additional data, the group listed the pros, cons, and further questions to explore. So that was the process that the group followed. In this same process, next slide, please, was followed for option 3C, absorb and close Longfellow and repurpose Roosevelt, as well as option 4, absorb and repurpose Flynn and After careful analysis, the committee determined, next slide, Terry, thanks. After careful analysis, the committee determined they would not recommend option 3C as a solution for the following reasons. Number one, there continues to be substantial construction in the Roosevelt or near the Roosevelt attendance area, which could impact enrollment in the coming years. Number two, Roosevelt families were impacted by boundary changes in 2020. And number three, the cost of maintenance needs at Roosevelt, as well as the cost to repurpose it to a Montessori program, to accommodate Montessori programming, could exceed $5 million. In July, the committee voted to share option 3B and option 4 with administration. I'll hand it back to Superintendent Johnson.
Just one more slide left for our audience, as well as for our board. This question and discussion time, but following a recommendation from DEMO and Trends, as I mentioned, that was shared in July, several steps need to occur prior to the final recommendation and a decision, and all that speak about this evening before. So this month, we'll engage a new administrative committee to examine and assess the preliminary recommendations that were made, clarity on past data or request additional data, identify other potential solutions, and to provide feedback to the present DEMO and Trends Committee Superintendent and Board. Amid October, the goal would be this administrative committee would compile all preliminary and additional recommendations, assess and share with the public during informational sessions and with the board during an open session. Feedback groups will be established, including website video for each recommendation, surveys on our website, and at community meetings. That was brought up this evening. I see it no different than a referendum, where you go to the schools who would be impacted or may be impacted, as well as PTOs, PTA's, neighborhood groups. November, after feedback is received from family, staff, and community members, the administrative committee will meet to determine the preferred choice. Late November, December, the superintendent will publicly share a final recommendation to the Board of Education for decision-making. I'd like to thank the committee for the work this past year. It's difficult work and tedious at times, and with subject matter that's so close to the, to the hearts and minds of our students and their families, it does get more difficult. But I would like to thank that, that group for their work this year. Thank you. Superintendent Johnson, Coler, I'll just echo, you know, having been a former member of this committee, the hard work that goes into it. I think this committee takes its work very seriously. Several of the names that are still active have been on that committee, joined at the same time I did, or they were there before I joined it. And again, seven years ago was before you were the administrative liaison committee that takes this work seriously, and that's really important. As we open it for questions, Dr. Beek and I are working, as has been the case on former other boundary change decisions, the board has made that decision, a shift in our governance, governing policy to call that out for this to be a board decision as well. So we'll be bringing that, I hope, in October, to be a quick, just so we can have that within decision-making. At this time, we're planning to be the final decision-makers on changes. So student reps, these are such easy topics, you don't want to go first. I'll even remember that when we get the callbacks, you're welcome to jump in then. Commissioner Tao.
Well, I suppose I just want to thank all of the parents, students, and the amazing numbers I hear today. I think it's very important for me to hear your feedback, and that be your input, and that's really important for me, to access and explore as well. I just want to say that I hear the, they all said, I read all emails, I really value all of the things that, I want to thank the DEMO and Trends Committee for their work. I'm sure it wasn't easy to go through the process. It was, it is a lot of information, and I, I really encourage Superintendent and the administrative committee, as they will, so to be sure that it is evolved with the students and the parents, really, but not just involvement, but make sure that there are intentional steps to be taken, too. People that are not able to play, to be comfortable in, in, it's all, it's a goal behind this facility, or people to hear, so that's something that I'm committed to making with the board and the district committee, to make sure all the impacts involved. Only question I have is on the space demands, sharing, and one of the slides, it was the bridge or three needs, and I'm not seeing that in, or developed, so I'm just seeing where it came up and how that was.
So the committee has been waiting, probably, Dr. Nordine, since you were on the committee. There's kind of been this looming, will we at one point have all-day 4K? And if we do, that changes kind of everything. We would need essentially twice as many 4K classrooms than we have right now. So that has, there's kind of been a buzz around that for quite some time. And the committee has been talking about that and waiting for that to happen, waiting to hear more about that for years. So knowing that it's out there, but we haven't necessarily heard anything more about that lately, the committee decided to pause on that until we would hear perhaps from legislators that that would be a possibility.
I was wondering how my impact, the rest of it, is also, considering, if you're looking for, 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 I think, what you say, making sure that we, like, be,
Professor Chase. I want to echo, pause, thanks to all of you who've been here. I think when you look at this information and you see capacity numbers, you see numbers, but you all personalized that and made it stories and families and all, and that's so important for us to remember. None of these options are ideal, all hard, and I want to soak in as much information and data, of course, but I also want to hear the stories of you and how important these neighborhood schools are to the community. So thank you all for that, that huge difference. Thank you.
Commissioner Dement.
I've got nothing additional. Thank you, Professor Coler.
Dr. Beek.
Well, Coler and Superintendent Johnson, thank you. I served as the board to DEMO and Trends, and I know the level of expertise and the commitment of the, to everyone joining us tonight. We have, we are always at our very best, team, family involved, so I too do not have questions, and we're hearing it for the first time. Much, much more to learn over the next weeks and months, and I look forward to, I'll do, getting out into the community and meeting with families and other communities.
Commissioner Zer.
Oh, I have pages, pages. I can't believe it's, I just, okay. So I guess the first thing I want to say is a huge thank you to the DEMO and Trends Committee. It is not, I cannot imagine how cumbersome, looking at this, I'm not a numbers person, that this would be to do, and imagine it putting together a very intricate puzzle all of the time, and it's thankless, tedious, awful work, and usually the solutions nobody likes. So it's just thank you to them and to their, to their work. And what I, what I want to say is that what we have here is, is like a race that everyone thinks would be a good idea to run, but none of the runners are in the stadium yet. It's like a great idea, if you think about, if you're like, oh, well, that might be kind of fun, and no one is in there yet. And, and I don't think we are even at a, to do this by December feels insane to me. And to what Dr. Beek said, this is not the first time the board has heard this. We were all presented this, we were all talked about this was going to be talked about in DEMO. We were all given a very big warning that this was going to be talked about in DEMO and Trends, because it's a public committee, and that they wanted to be, we wanted, they wanted us to be aware that it was, that it was coming. And so I had maybe a set of expectations, what this was going to look like when it came to the board, that I was caught a bit off-guard by. So obviously, this slide is very important to me. I've not seen this one yet. So this one is, is promising. I think that if you, if, if our district wants to sell the solution that DEMO and Trends has come up with, or solutions that DEMO and Trends has come up with here, to our community, we can probably, I mean, if we want to make it palatable, we can do it in that amount of time. If we want to actually hear from our community, people involved, come up with new solutions, go back to the drawing board, find some innovative approaches, this is not enough time.
Appreciate everyone's enthusiasm. We're here to listen as well. We do not allow public participation during our meetings, so I'll ask you to please hold your comments, your cheers, and your applause. I appreciate the passion that you're bringing, but this is our meeting that we need to run without interaction. Thank you.
So in addition to timeframe, I'm not, I, the, the research shows that the way to do this and to do this well, if we're going to do this at all, is to have the community at the table from the very beginning, and that has not been the case. We are now coming with the solution, saying, "Tell us what you think of this solution," with the idea that maybe we're just going to do it anyway. So I, that, that worries me tremendously. And so I just want to say that I am very concerned about the timeline, number one. Number two, I don't believe that, that, I am concerned about our internal policies of board. So, so one of the things that is the hardest part of coherent governance to me is that I don't feel like I really have all that much control, over much, as a board member, except policy. That's what we have control over. We set the policy, and the policy is supposed to inspire and guide our administrators in their very professional and impressive work that they do for our schools. And I, I am very, very concerned that there are multiple policies here that we have that are not being honored in the way that I believe we wrote them to be honored. So we have, we have a very specific piece of our policy that calls for appropriate input and ongoing two-way strategic and meaningful dialogue between the district and the community. That's OE 7.5. That's families, parents, we should have community planners, not just, you know, a demographics guy from the city, great individual, wonderful person. I want to hear from the city of Eau Claire that just passed a big thing where they're going to try to bring, I just found out about this this weekend, where they're going to try to bring more population into the city center. That is their strategic goal, is to repopulate the city center, and we're talking about closing three city center schools, or impacting three city center schools. Because the city voice is not here. Our city's growth and our city's goal, how they're moving, is not here. We started from the interior of our community and said, "There's a problem here in the middle, let's push the kids out." Other than saying, "Why can't we bring kids in?" One of the smartest things Dr. Beek ever said to me, and it was, I was trying to open a school, it's crazy, something, I'm concerned, but the, the, she was like, she, we're standing outside this building, and she said, "Wouldn't it be amazing if this building was full of kids?" Right downtown Eau Claire, super, you know, just, just right here in the heart of everything. And I, that has stuck with me so much, Lori, for such a very, very long time. I look at this building and think of that often. The, we, we have, and I alluded to this earlier, we have a commitment in six, OE 6.1, to include more voices in, of district staff in district decisions. They're, they're not here. I don't see district staff, I don't see their voices. And I understand that, that they are employees of the district and not necessarily of their schools, but they have invested so much. It is such, it is such, it is so dishonorable to the work that they've done for their school communities, for those kids, they have built whole structures. They look, we, we get the presentations on the data, where they come here and they say, "We analyze all this data that the district gives us, and we create strategic plans for our building, for our kids." And we're just going to say, "Sorry, next year, that's gone, out the window." And then we're going to send those kids to a nearby school, and it's going to take a whole year and some change for those district administrators to see the impacts of those students in the building and to put the right things in place for those kids. And, and that brings me to probably the biggest impact to our policy that I see here. The biggest concern is OE 2, because Longfellow and Flynn sit at 70%, I wrote it down, and 55% economically disadvantaged students compared to the total district at 39%. Those are substantial margins of kids who sit in a disadvantage from the rest of our district, substantial portion of our students. And we have a commitment in this district to not create or uphold inequity, and if the research, if you read anything, I mean, you can do a simple Google search, and it will tell you that the kids who suffer when neighborhood schools are closed are those who are economically disadvantaged. And we've got two of our highest schools here. So this proposal, even getting to the administration, when it is clearly a challenge to our equity statement, is very concerning to me as a board member, whose only method of, of, or only, you know, anchor of strength are these beautiful policies that we have created that guide this district and do, have done it, and do it tremendous justice, and which our administrators have taken and really run with in that form of that EMLSS that we've been so eloquently about earlier. I, I, I have concerns about our, our climate commitment. We are taking away schools, we, you know, we have a piece of our climate commitment that is dedicated to lowering admissions and lowering transportation costs, and we're taking away neighborhood schools. Here, kids primarily bike, walk, in favor of putting them on a bus, and putting parents in cars to drive them. So I'm just saying, it's not maybe the biggest impact here. So I'm just saying it's not maybe the biggest impact here. But also, when we, when we look at resource utilization, let's say we have a sudden need for space. Let's say there's all-day 4K, which that was shocking to me, by the way. I was like, how many double classrooms, and we're talking about closing spaces? But anyway, the situation is, is that now we have to go into a very, a very environmentally intensive situation of gobbling resources to build onto schools, possibly with another referendum, which I don't know if these folks in the room are going to feel real inspired by. So I am just, I am feeling like there are so many reasons why this gives me great pause as a board member, and I will need so very, very much information to think this is a great idea. Not the least of which is that I would just expect ample evidence that shows me my why here. Because I don't see the why, other than it's not efficient based on a metric I don't even know where it comes from. So I don't have a number. How much money does this save me, other than deferred maintenance? This is the only dollar, that's the only dollar amount I've seen. How many, how many staff will get cut? I don't know. How, how are we going to sell the buildings? If so, how much? How much ongoing is this going to save us as a district? What does this do for our budget? And what, what are the plans for that money? Because I think that, that Dr. Elworthy has done a brilliant job of balancing our budget, of bringing this board up balanced budget. As far as I can tell, we don't need it. I mean, we could always use it. We don't need it right now. So and this brings me to my final impact on, on our, on our, in what I believe is our policy. And that is R3. And I am so proud of our results policies, and I was part of the group of people, some people are sitting in this room who are part of that group that wrote those policies. And I want to say that we have only one-third of our district results policies are academic. That is how we weight that. One-third is academic. The other two-thirds are, are lifelong development and growth and citizens of a diverse community. And of R3, within R3, one-third of our results policies are related to students engaging in their communities, and it starts at elementary school. That is where students learn to engage in their community. And if it is too big and too inaccessible, and the families and the kids that they are seeing in there are not the people that they, that they know, well, that's my neighbor. That's the lady who lives across the street. That's, those are, those are so-and-so's, mom and dad. Are they going to learn how to contribute if their neighborhood is not a part of that conversation? That's their second home side of their family. So it's important that we protect it and make it accessible. Last thing, and I promise I'm done, is Montessori. So I'm a Montessori parent. I'm a proud Montessori educator. I believe in the Montessori method of education. I will believe in it as long as I live. I do not believe that Montessori should be a part of this conversation. And for many, many reasons. Number one, where are the Montessori parents? Where is the Montessori Governance Board? Where is Pam? I don't see any evidence here that this is what the Montessori school wants. Because there are so many reasons why a second Montessori location makes no sense. Number one, we don't have teachers certified in Montessori to teach a second location. That's just blurb. Number, and number two, if you are going to open a second Montessori location, you have to be very, very careful with how that's done, because it actually undermines the method. So until I actually hear what that looks like, a second Montessori, and it comes from that community of people that this seems like a reasonable way for us to solve, because the only reason we wanted expansion of Montessori was to solve the diversity and access issues of Montessori. If this isn't the solution to that, because it comes with all of its other problems, then this isn't the solution to that. Montessori might need a different solution, because it's a jewel of our district, but this, this isn't, I don't think this is what they wanted. I ran into the chair of their Governance Board. She didn't even know this was being talked about until the day this was the solution on the table. That's very concerning to me. So I, I just think that we are putting the cart so far before the horse. We have not given this anywhere near the thought that it needs. And I don't think that it is ready, I don't think that it has actually been bounced off of our policy enough to even be here. So that is how I, that's how I feel. And I'll be done.
Farah.
I also want to thank every single parent, every single child, every single person from our community and sat through this long meeting to get to this part, spoke your hearts out, who cried while you talked. Everybody's had their first time that they come to a school board meeting, because it's something that touches you. And your voice shakes, and you might cry, and it feels like a lot to be in this room. I remember that time for me, too. And a few years later, here I am on the other side of the desk. But I'm still you. I'm still a parent. I'm still a person who loves public education. And that's why I was on that side of the desk, and that's why I'm on this side of the desk, because I believe in public education for every single kid. I want to echo some of the things that Commissioner Zer said about policy and about just feeling like this process really hasn't been justified to me. In no way has, have I heard a justification for closure and disruption of the two poorer schools in our district. I haven't heard a justification for that. Underutilization of some space? I don't know. Flynn's at 68.4, and you wanted 70? I don't know. I'm an English professor, but I can understand that that's not very far off. I can do that math most at the first grade level. Again, we haven't heard any kind of predictions of cost savings that are projected for this. It's not clear to me what problem we're trying to solve, except for making more space for Montessori students. And I have nothing against the Montessori program or the Montessori school, but in no way have I heard a justification that would justify the disruption and harm to other community schools, to neighborhood schools, and that's not a neighborhood school. To take neighborhood schools for a choice program is, for me, contrary to our equity principles. And when I first heard about some of this, I had a question about Longfellow, since I'm also a Longfellow parent. And I asked, oh, well, you know, you see there are all these extra seats, you know, you want this number of extra Montessori seats. Could you just, you know, bring them on into Longfellow? And then I was told that we couldn't do that, because Montessori classrooms are one and a half times the size of everyone else's classroom. Well, if we're underutilizing space, why don't we knock down some walls and make the classrooms bigger for the kids that are already in those buildings? I mean, I genuinely don't understand this. They can't, they can't fit in this, they can't come along, join on in, come on down to Longfellow, but oh, no, they won't fit because they, they need 1.5 times the space? I haven't heard a justification for that. And I'm, again, not against Montessori programs, not against the Montessori school. But for the, the level of disruption that we're entertaining here and the amount of pain that we're entertaining here, there has been no justification for why it needs to occur at all to my mind. And so I, I don't see how this timeline makes sense. And that's not a critique of the work of DEMO and TRENDS. I think that they pursued their, their charge honestly and diligently and carefully. I respect the work that they've done and the way that they've attempted to come up with solutions. But the DEMO and TRENDS committee is, is not trained with an equity lens. Because if they had, they would know that closing two poorer schools in town is not an equity solution. I have a lot of difficulty with the proposals that are on the table here. And I want to say that that is not because I am a parent at one particular school, but because I am a public school advocate for every single kid and every single family. So to my view, there's, I think, a lot of work to listen. I think the next step is a lot of listening to the community and hearing what kinds of suggestions you have and solutions you have for a problem that I'm, I'm not sure know what it is.
Johnson.
Yes, I would like to respond. I don't respect the thoughts and comments of board members, especially Mr. Zer and Chris Ferrar. What I do want to share is that I did spend, and Kohler and I did spend time with you, and we shared here the crescent options. Now, I'm just hearing some of this first time. Didn't hear anything over the weekend. There have been no policies that have been broken yet. There have not been. What I ask is that you give me a chance. And I would like to hear from the full board when I come back at some point in October. I'd certainly like to hear from the full board as a board. No, this isn't reasonable to make this decision by the 20, you know, December of 2025. Totally respect that. Want to hear that from the full board. This isn't my idea of, okay, we passed a referendum last year, let's go ahead and the boundary changes and school closures. I certainly don't, because I realize that's why I brought former administrators in to talk about this. We have present administrators who have gone through this process. When I went to college here, when this started back in 89, I kind of remember that. It's difficult, difficult stuff. And yes, I do. I, I thought, and I'm glad that it came out. We're going to get some feedback. In the past, or if it were my first or second year, probably have an answer. The answer, I wanted to come out basically through the people who have spoken. I've already reached out to, and Dr. Bika knows this, General Kid, just old neighborhood. Paul, who had spoken before, we sat close to each other, I think, at the referendum committee meetings. You meet with people when times aren't so good, when you're looking for money, but also things like this. But having individual meetings with those people to ask, what do you need? What would you like? That's what I will be doing. But also, the DEMO and TRENDS group have done a, again, tremendous job with the information they have. Certainly our job to, okay, what, first of all, what would these do? We've got a, we've got a financial situation. Did we get $18 million a year from the community for the next four years? Absolutely. But as we know, the state budget this year that was passed before, it did. And it's difficult to, to then talk to our community about, well, we've got 1,600 open seats. What I hope is that you give us team, and after speaking with folks individually, collectively, the progress at Second October Board Chance, here's our progress with it. Other districts have done it. Many districts have done it in the state. It doesn't feel any better, but prolonging the agony would be more difficult. But also to get that information from the board collectively. Make a decision by December 2025. Great. If not, feel free to let us know as soon as possible, so we can continue the work in a different fashion to fulfill the policy requirements, what you feel, but also to get the answers that you to be fair to the folks' crowd, but also there would probably be other recommendations. Could this new committee say, yeah, just these two recommendations? Could, could it be not these two? We've got two, three different other creative ideas that, you know, I think we can just take it a step further. Great. I think people would probably love to hear that. Because this group of people, you know, this administrative committee, probably two-thirds, administrators, some staff, but also some community members. But also having meetings with folks that, folks that spoke today, or meeting with PTA's, PTO's. But it could change. It could be in a month from now, it could be a different group. It could be a different, and then what happens? But again, sharing this, taking time, hour and a half apiece for people back in July. Haven't broken any policies yet. Have not. I'm just sharing transparently, this is what the committee has said. The next steps, I start providing recommendations to you, and we're not quite ready for it, because I haven't done X, Y, and Z. Absolutely. I'm sure that would make that complete, so ultimately the decision, whether it's December 2025 or later on, is clear as a bell, and that I fulfill the policy requirements of the So again, I thank you for your comments, and I thank you for the time to respond.
Paul.
Sitting next to you at that meeting where you were letting us know that this was coming forward, and I saw your list of end community connections, I could see that. You said, Dr. Bika, learning more and hearing from people about options as the process goes on. Thank you, Kohler, as well, for your time tonight. This time, I would ask the the reflection survey, a way of monitoring our own performance, open that up and complete that survey for the audience and board members and student reps. I'd ask that you please hold your conversation until we adjourn. This time I'd hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
For our second by Zer, motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.